Good evening, everybody. I am Daniel Honigs and I am the President of Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers, Local Number 710, the teachers' union here at Columbia Heights Public Schools. And I'd like to welcome everybody this evening to our Board Candidate Forum. Local Number 710 always sponsors these events and we're very happy to do that again. I know I saw quite a few people that are here and that are on the forum at our last one for the primary election. So, I'd like to let everybody know that tonight's event is being videotaped. It will be shown on the educational cable channel that all the board meetings are shown on, so you can go there or you can encourage other people who are not here tonight to see that. As well, it will be on the Columbia Heights Public Schools website where the -- all of the board meetings are at, and so it'll be available there to be seen. I'd like to welcome our -- all of our board candidates. One person who's not here tonight is Joanna Stark, but I'd like to let everybody know that we have Hala Asamri, Janet Kendall, Molly Lewis, Michael Nowitzki, and Laura Palmer. And we will be taking questions from the audience throughout. We have a set number of questions that will be asked first, starting as soon as introductions are done. And those questions will be there and then we will be continuing to take, and we have some district employees in the back who will be collecting the note cards from you for your questions. They'll be categorizing those questions and putting them by topic, so if your question is not specifically asked, it's probably a similar question that was asked, and we grouped them together so we'd ask just one question. And we'll continue taking those questions until eight o'clock. If the regular questions that we have are done by -- before eight o'clock, we'll start in on those questions. And then if we don't have enough questions after eight o'clock to make it through to 8:30, then we will take any further questions from the audience. And so it is my distinct pleasure at this point to turn it over and to introduce Bill Hugo. He is the pastor at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church. He has been a member of our community for over 15 years, and he'll be moderating tonight's forum. So, Bill?
Thank you. We have a number of questions. Each candidate will be given 90 seconds to answer each question. And the first question, we'll start with Hala, and then each candidate will also have a chance to answer that question. Question one is, tell us briefly about yourself and why you are a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Thank you. My name is pronounced Hala.
Hala.
And I'm a mom, an educator, and I'm passionate about serving students. I'm passionate about serving the community. And my goal is to push equity, excellence, and transparency. And I'm committed to making this district a better one so that everybody gets to -- wants to get on a waiting list before they get to say, "I'm a proud Highlander."
Thank you, Hala. Janet, tell us briefly about yourself and why you are a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Hi. I thank you all for being here this evening. I'm Janet Kendall. I'm a 25-year resident of Columbia Heights in addition to back in the 70s. Moving here and finishing my four -- last four years of school here, I did graduate from Columbia Heights with a very well-rounded education focusing on business that enabled me to continue the next 40-plus years in my working career. I'm a wife, a mother, grandmother, and have done many events, many things in the community over the years. I'm running for school board because I feel there are changes that need to happen sooner rather than later in what direction from the Department of Education and our local community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Molly, tell us briefly about yourself and why you are a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Thank you. Again, my name is Molly. I am also a longtime Columbia Heights resident. I did graduate from Columbia Heights Schools and made the choice to bring my children back into this district. I believe there's a lot of really good things here, and I know that there's work that needs to be done, but I think it's important for people to be on the board that understand the kids in our community. I'm a social worker. I've been working with children and families for over 20 years, and I feel like I bring a lot to the table in terms of understanding equity, diversity, children with special needs, and making sure that the wide spectrum of education is available for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it.
All right.
Hi, I'm Mike Nowitzki. I've been a longtime resident of Columbia Heights for over 41 years. I brought my kids here to the school district because I believed in it back. That's why we bought our house here. We came from lower northeast. I'm a superintendent and maintenance facility manager of a private Jewish school which also does a charter school in St. Paul. Been in that position for over 10 years. I'm treasurer of the Columbia Heights Lions. I'm part of the Northeast Boosters. I believe in the community. I'd do anything I can to help the community. I believe that we -- I can help make the district very financially responsible and transparent for all the things and bring back all the good basics of the education back to the Columbia Heights School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, would you like me to repeat the question?
I don't know. No, I think I'm going to wing it.
All right.
Okay, thanks. I'm Laura Palmer. I've been in this district for, I believe it's been 27 years. I've had two children also graduate from Columbia Heights, and I have two more right now. One just moved to the academy and the other one is over in the high school. I am seeking election to the school board because there are some really great things that are happening here, and I really want to make sure that we have the best opportunities for our students. And we have a very diverse community and a very diverse curriculum to be able to meet their individual needs, and I'd like to continue pursuing this.
Thank you all. For the second question, we'll start with Janet Kendall. The school board voted to put a bond referendum on the November ballot with three separate questions. Do you support these three questions and why or why not?
No, I do not. The reasons I don't support it is we turned down the same bond last year. This year it has been split into three separate questions. I think we could do better. We asked the school district a year ago to review and come up with other options. That did not happen. That still is not happening. I think by the time we spend $12.5 million just for North Park, in addition to about $5 million for Priority One and Two Maintenance Projects that have not been completed, and also the 2014 bond referendum had funds in there that was designated for North Park. Those projects have been deferred. So I guess we don't understand the reason why all of these deferrals and it's led to the building declining even further. So with that, I do not support it.
Thank you. Molly, same question.
I absolutely support all three questions. The current board, which I am currently on, has done a lot of listening to the community, hearing things. We really feel, though, that this is something that our community needs. The school at North Park is in need of these changes. There's a lot of things that people might not be thinking of, but a lot of the examples are just moving some of the spaces to more appropriate settings for the special education program, different things like that. Again, the board has looked at these needs and pursued it. In terms of the current spending, everything is on track. There's been some movement in things to get things done sooner that might have come up as a need, but the district is being transparent. If people have questions, they're more than welcome to, at any point, come to the board as well as the district for any questions. And I think that we've been making sure that it's -- the spaces are open for people to have come into it if they have questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, same question.
No, I do not support it. It was brought up to the citizens at the last election. They defeated it. We're starting to tax aid out all our families out of our houses, and the only way we're going to make the school district get bigger and better and people that are committed to it is to keep the home ownership here with a long-term commitment, and if we keep raising the taxes for these referendums, we're driving the people out of our houses. Again, there's -- I haven't looked line item to light item, but I think there's a lot of wants, not needs, in the referendum. There has been maintenance money that's been allocated to do a lot of these projects that haven't been done that I think should be done. And, you know, each year we have X amount of dollars that is supposed to go to the maintenance of the facilities, and I think they've been getting deferred to other want projects instead of needs. So at this time, I cannot support it.
Thank you. Laura, same question.
Yes, I absolutely support all three questions. I guess I would like to address a couple of things. There is on our website a breakdown of exactly how we spend our bond dollars and on what projects that we were asking for to be able to be funded by the public, and the public very graciously agreed to support -- to support those efforts. Some of the projects in specific to North Park are only being deferred as doing it as a complete package because the cost savings is quite a bit -- it's much more cost-effective to do it all at one time than to do it piecemeal. And all of those projects are not actually included in the money that we're asking for in the present bonds. That is actually money that's already being allocated that's above what we're asking for in addition. In addition to that, I actually firmly believe that having an independent school district is a community asset, and that's why I wholeheartedly support it. We need to stay strong as a community, and I believe that our school, it plays a huge role in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hala?
I absolutely support all three questions because students need those things. And they're not wants, they are needs. We need to work on the upkeep of our buildings. And I've heard the argument that if this was about -- if this was money for teaching and learning, then that would be okay. Well, students don't learn in isolation of the space they sit in. The space you're in makes a difference, you know? Your location, if your school is safe, it, you know, like, that's logical in every area in our society. But when it comes to education, all of a sudden, we need to start making things really tight on the kids. At the end of the day, strong schools make strong communities, and that's where I sit on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The third question is a safety question. How would you address or support increasing safety and security in our schools? Please describe what a safe and secure school looks and feels like to you, and we'll begin this round with Molly.
I would look at, first of all, physical safety of the buildings. And to me, that means having that secured entrance so that situations are able to be monitored, people coming into the building are able to be checked in properly. Our schools, I believe, have that in, you know, many of our buildings. Obviously, the one that we're lacking is North Park, and that's why the question on the referendum is very important to me. In addition to that, there's emotional safety, I think, for the kids. And I think that our district does a really good job of making sure that we have mental health programs, staff available, the liaison officers in the schools. It's -- the children here, I believe, feel safe because they're all included in the programs. They're all a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I believe in the security. I believe that North Park does need to get a security system in where the doors are buzzed in and they got the secondary block for the people to get in, you know, to be checked in. They just got a grant from the state to be able to do that, and hopefully that gets done. And I feel the rest of the buildings and everything around here are safe, and the children feel safe, so I feel that it's adequate for what we need at this time.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, again, the entrance over at North Park is definitely a concern that we've had for some time. Being able to move that space is a fairly large project, so that's one of the reasons I strongly support the bond. In addition to that, I also look at safety outside and the present configuration of the bus drop-off and playground over at North Park also. I consider a huge safety issue, even being able to pull around on that hill during the wintertime when it's all icy. And I'm hoping that we can address that with the bond as well, as far as the different programs that we have and the additional resources that we have with social workers and some mental health type of programs that we're putting in. That should also help to improve the emotional safety, emotional welfare of the children too. And teachers are so incredibly tuned to their students. So that's all good. You've got to know each other, and if you see somebody in trouble, you know, you try to do what you can to help them out in our community, and especially our kids. They really stick together, so.
Thank you. Hala?
I believe that there are two main aspects when we're talking about school safety and security, and they're the physical and the emotional. The physical is typically addressed with emergency plans, things like that, but those are not effective if your building can't be secured. And then, like what Laura was saying, if students are not safe in the area where the buses are coming by, as is the case in North Park with both of those issues, or if students need to sit on the stage in the cafeteria, you know, they could fall. These things are not safe. The other aspect, we said the emotional one that was also mentioned earlier, that's being addressed using some SEL education and some mental health support and continuing to work on prevention of bullying and dealing with things like that.
And Janet?
I just went blank. I'm sorry. I do know that Columbia Heights just received a $425,000 grant for school safety specifically to North Park and another $58,000 for Columbia Academy. I think that will go a long ways to making a dent into North Park. It does have a secure entrance, and nobody is saying that the building is unsafe. The building is inspected every year by the fire department. So, you know, with that, I think there are other creative ways that everybody could come together to accomplish the goals without going over the top with the greatest and the bestest of everything. I wish I could hand my grandchildren everything they ask for, but that's not good for them. And as far as the emotional impact, at the end of school last year, my granddaughter was not emotionally safe at all and has slept the district and is thriving at a new school that is better fit to her needs. So there are still -- we have leaps and bounds to go, and we're here to help all of them.
Thank you. The fourth question. School districts across the state are negatively affected by the special education cross-subsidy financial issue. What would you do as a school board member to address this issue? Michael?
It's a very good question. It's a tough one to answer. Definitely, you're going to need to get some funding from somewhere to make it all possible. I grant you that. The state has put up certain amount of money, and I understand that they're having -- the school districts are having trouble collecting it from them. But it's something that we're going to have to deal with, and, you know, there's -- we can move funding around through the general budget to make ends meet, to make sure that everything is met the way it's supposed to be. That's it.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, we've been doing a number of projects through Metro, Northeast Metro 916, and one of the projects that we're working on is trying to create programs that can be replicated within the school to be able to bring some of those costs down. One of them, for example, that we piloted is called the Anchor Program, which can meet the needs of some students so they can still have -- they can still be served within the district and not have to go to a higher-cost area. That's kind of the approach that I think we're going to have to take is being able to bring some of those supports even in as, like, trauma practices for helping students even in a traditional classroom setting that may prevent them from going into these higher-cost programs. There is a lot of research out there about ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and we're working really hard on being able to identify those and get the supports earlier before it becomes critical. So it's all about catching this early enough and giving them the supports they need in a more effective way, and definitely it'll be a more cost-effective way.
Thank you. Hala?
The special education cross-subsidy significantly affects our budget, so some things I would work on are looking for efficiencies in the budget, wherever we can change things, adjust things, so we can save money for that. That may involve consolidating services, partnering with other districts, partnering with businesses in the community, of course, applying for grants whenever we can. Oftentimes, grants are not big enough to meet the massive needs we have, but every bit makes a difference. And finally, advocating for our students' needs with lawmakers and talking to the lawmakers and asking them to really think about getting the state to pay what they say they're going to pay.
Thank you. Janet?
I agree, Hala. We need to do more reaching out to other districts and seeing what they are doing and certainly bombarding our legislature and, you know, communicating with our parents that we need their help on the special education to make an in-rod with Department of Education. Looking at our line-item budgets, I would much prefer an operational levy versus the referendum that's currently being asked for, and I do see that as becoming a possibility with the situation with the special education funds that we are not receiving and our kids are certainly entitled to as the whole district.
Thank you. Molly?
For the past four years that I've been on the school board in Columbia Heights, we've been talking about this. The special ed cross-subsidy is not new, and our district has been, over the last four years at least and before that, looking at programs every year, looking for efficiencies, finding new ways to make sure that we're able to meet the needs of our children while we are looking at cutting positions and different things like that over the years. So I think it's continuing to look for those grants when we can, continuing to look for different programs. But those are things that the district has been doing, and I do want to make sure people are aware of that. I also think it's important to support the advocacy efforts of anyone that's looking to bring that to the state because ultimately, that's where we're going to get the changes, is by continuing to press the state for what they did promise the school districts. Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll go a little bit lighter for question number five. Which of the Columbia Heights schools' core values best describes you? Laura?
Loyal. That's probably it.
Okay. Hala?
I would say integrity.
Thank you. Janet?
Collaborative. I like it when everybody is working together, and I work to get people on the same page, or I try.
Molly?
Integrity.
And Michael?
Community involvement.
Thank you. Question six. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member? Hala?
It's the extent of the involvement. A school board member -- did you say a school board or a community member? Was that the -- can you repeat the question?
A parent. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or a community member?
Okay. A school board member is part of a team that collectively are in charge of the running of the district through one employee, and that is the superintendent. A school board member cannot make decisions on their own other than a vote. A school board member can't move things along without working with the team, so that's really important. A parent or a community member can always come in and make their voice heard and say what they want and push for what they want. That's actually something that they do have similar, that they have alike. Thank you. But the extent to which they can affect the change is different if they're not sitting here ready to vote on it.
Thank you. Janet?
A school board member is part of a team as a whole, and we have to make decisions and discuss and work as a whole for the betterment of the school district, for the staff and kids and the school board team as a whole, whereas a parent or a community member is working for their agenda, their issues, what their concerns may be. Last year, I came in about my granddaughter. So if I'm elected to the school board, I would be having to step back from that role and work as a school board member and let the parent deal with that issue. And I do understand that there is a separation. This would be my passion, my job, to make sure that I represent the best of the community.
Thank you. Molly?
Yes, I think that the largest difference is, of course, being a part of a school board is that you cannot act individually. As a parent, I can certainly advocate for my child. I can impact the programs that they might be a part of. I can volunteer. I can do all of those things. But when you sit on the school board, your job is to collect -- to get the information that you need and make decisions that are in the best interests of most of the kids that we serve. So we're always looking at the bulk of our student population. It's not about what my child might be receiving or not. You're taking yourself out of that role. I think, you know, as a parent and a community member, though, you can certainly always voice your opinions. You can come to the table. There's lots of opportunities for people to make this community better in that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I believe the school board is the eyes and the ears for the community, that we have to have some certainty of listening to what the community and the parents in the community are saying and bringing it to the team to try to bring it up forward before we get the transparency. And as a board member, it's the best way to make the place run efficiently, flawlessly, and bring the right kind of education up to the school that fits the community and the groups that are in the community. So I'd definitely be, number one, would be listening to the parents in the community to make sure it gets brought up to the board.
Thank you. And Laura?
Well, it's kind of more about, when you're a school -- when you're a school board member, you almost have to take like a thousand-foot view overall of the entire -- and the entire district. Whenever you're making decisions on your team, you're working together collaboratively with the administration and staff to be the most efficient and thoughtful in your approach, and you do longer-term planning. So that's all part of the process. As a parent, you can very openly advocate for something specific with regards to your child, but when you're a parent and a school board member, you have to be very cautious that when you are making decisions, that it is an overall benefit for the entire community at large and not just specifically because it's a particular program that you might be in favor of.
Thank you.
It's a balancing act. So it's a balancing act.
Next question. How would you be an advocate for the needs of the district on a legislative level? We'll begin with Janet.
I'm not afraid to write letters or go visit the state capi, state Capitol. I did that. I taught my Girl Scouts out many, many years ago. I've taken my granddaughters, my daughter. So I might get ignored or not get responded back by my representatives, but I keep trying. I'm not a quitter.
And Molly?
Yes, I would agree by writing letters, writing to our lawmakers, and also I think just making sure that i, if there's a group of people in our community that are willing to take that information down, that we support them, that they know that they have our support and that we can provide them with any information needed as lo, as well as our names of support on those things that they're bringing to the state.
And Michael?
I agree with the other three sta, two statements here that, you know, you gotta be advocate to, to bring it to the state, support the, if there's any groups that wanna bring to the state, give them the information and, you know, contact your legislators and say, "We definitely need to do this."
Thank you. Laura?
Always keep talking. Talk to everybody. Talk to everybody about every issue and get as much information in front of people that can make decisions. You just have to just keep at it over and over and over again.
Thank you. And Hala?
I would start with contacting, continue to contact lawmakers and I would continue to support people who are contacting them, rallying at, at the state level, at the legislature, to try to get lawmakers to pay attention to our needs. Social media is a very effective place to raise awareness about the issues that plague our education system, like the special education cross subsidy. I would also make a strong effort, continue to make a strong effort, to learn about the candidates that support education and how they support it. And I would vote for them. Going out and voting makes all the difference.
Thank you. Next question. What are your thoughts on and commitment to sustaining early learning programs such as voluntary pre-K4 and all-day kindergarten? Molly?
Can you repeat the beginning of that question? I'm sorry.
What are your thoughts on and commitment to sustaining early program, early learning programs such as voluntary pre-K4 and all-day kindergarten?
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I fully support all-day kindergarten as well as the early, the four-year-old pre-K programs that we have. Early interventions are well-known and well-demonstrated to be very effective in student learning and overall achievement. Not just the, the basics, but also just the social-emotional learning that they're able to do. Our, our teachers in this district do a lovely job of making sure that then, that they're not programmed from the time they come in until the time they're done. It's a well-balanced act that they do. I give them a lot of credit. There's a lot of playtime in there, downtime. So it's not structured, but they are getting those constant doses of the education and the early learning is very important.
Thank you. Michael?
I believe in the all-day kindergarten. It's definitely, you know, a good way to get the education started. As far as the pre-four, you know, half-days, I think would be sufficient just to get them used to the system. You're not gonna keep the attention span to anybody that young. And then again, we can encourage the parenting, to do some parenting at home 'cause parenting is definitely part of the educational system too. We cannot just take that for granted, that we're gonna send them to school at the age four and not have the parents do anything to be involved. Because without the parents' involvement, we can throw as much money as we want against this. It's never gonna happen, right? Thanks.
Laura?
I've, I've always been very impressed with our, with our early learning programs and being fortunate enough to have received full funding for our pre-K has been an absolute blessing. Now, in a lot of districts that do offer, offer the pre-K, that is actually a, a service that, that would either have to be either paid for by the parent or, or through some sort of a scholarship or grant. We're very fortunate that we can offer that within the district and, and it would be great to be able to offer that to more students and that would certainly happen if we can get the bond passed and get that added on over at North Park. The, the full-day, all-day kindergarten has been a longstanding practice in this, in this district. We have fully funded it even prior to getting any type of funding for the state and I believe we will continue supporting that because it is a great benefit for our students.
Thank you. Hala?
I fully support our, our early learning programs. Having the all-day kindergarten is a big deal for kids and it helps them get ready for what's to come. And early childhood programs are one of the big, most effective ways of addressing the achievement gap. Just getting kids started early so they can be ready for school. That said, I also appreciate the voluntary aspect of the pre-K4 because every parent knows his or her child and some kids are just not ready for that. So I appreciate that it is voluntary, so parents can decide when their child is ready to attend that. But all in all, I support our early childhood program, early learning program.
And Janet?
Columbia Heights has an awesome early learning program and I got to experience that as a grandmother with my 21-year-old granddaughter when, when she was young. So I, we still talk about those days and the fun we had when I would bring her to her early learning classes here. And then other grandchildren when they were in pre-K and the half-day program and it was just a step up for her and it was a little bit of a parent break. And so Columbia Heights has done an awesome job in that aspect even before all-day kindergarten was mandated. So kudos to Columbia Heights.
Thank you all. Do you support vouchers for non-public schools? If yes, to what extent? Michael?
I support vouchers. They, uh, gives everybody an opportunity and other, give other ways of alternative of learning. Not every child learns the same. Sometimes in a more structured area, the children just succeed way better. You know, a lot of the other schools at the young age do the uniforms and some kids need that disciplined uniform. And it gives the, the parents and the community a chance to keep them hopefully into this area here. So vouchers, I would definitely support.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, I actually do support vouchers. I, I believe parents are, are best equipped to know what's best for their children. I believe that they will always do what they believe is ba, best for their children and I believe we can make this district and have made this district in many ways the best choice. So I will leave it up to the parents' discretion.
Hala?
I support the public schools. And, um, public schools can come in many different forms. There are the districted ones and there are the non-districted ones, charter schools. And if parents don't like what they see in one school, they can take their kid to another school. I don't know how I feel about taking public money and directing it to private institutions that are mostly religious. If a parent wants to take his or her child to a private school, that's completely his, his or her prerogative. But I don't see where that needs to be supported financially by everybody else.
Thank you. Janet?
I honestly don't know how I would feel about vouchers. My concern would be then for the public school system of how that would be impacted if everybody had a voucher and could go wherever they wanted to go. It's, should they maybe get a credit tax-wise? I could see that more of a possibility since it is taxpayer money that funds public schools. But then if you got a credit on your taxes, that would help with your education expenses and I don't know how the tax codes are going to be rewritten or anything like that. So I think it could impact the public school system big time and I think it's happening in a couple other states. So I'd like to see statistics before I make a decision one way or the other.
And Molly?
No, I do not support vouchers. I believe that there is so many opportunities within the public schools. Currently, students are able to enroll in different, in different districts if needed. There's charter schools. There's lots of opportunities. But I do not believe, given the, the state of where our money is at and funding, that we need to be pulling any, any more money from that.
Thank you. At this time, Minnesota school boards do not have the same levy authority as city and county government. What are your thoughts on local levy control for public school boards of education? We'll begin with Laura.
Oh, the easy one, huh? Okay, um, you know, I, I kinda like the, oddly enough, I kinda, I, I do actually like the fact that we, that we actually do need to, to be supported by the public on occasions where you know that there's a real need and, and it's very difficult to, to get the mass amount of information out and in a way that, that is easily accessible for everybody. Sometimes it can be frustrating when there are real needs and it's, it's difficult to just make it happen. But it, it, it's, it's a, I guess I, I would be probably more in favor of the city having to come to the taxpayers to be able to have levy authority. You know, if, if we are gonna do it, they, they should have to do it too. They can just unilaterally raise them and there's nothing we can do.
Thank you. Hala?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. At this time, Minnesota school boards do not have the same levy authority as city and county government. What are your thoughts on local levy control for public school boards of education?
Education needs money. And I'm sure all of you have seen that, that thing online where if a teacher were a babysitter, which teachers are not, I'm a teacher myself. If a teacher were a babysitter and got paid X amount of dollars per hour per student, a teacher would get paid a lot of money, which teachers don't get paid. And so I'm not just talking about teacher pay. I'm talking about all of what education needs. Districts, school districts need to be able to have levy authority, just like cities and counties. This is all of our kids. This is all of our futures. And not even just for that reason, but for the principle of it because every kid deserves to have a good education, not just because they're gonna be taking care of us when we're older. This is, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Janet?
Oh, that's a tough one. I understand the school districts need the money, but you also have the power to ask the community for an operational levy. Yeah, it has to be voted on. The city can sometimes push their levies through without going to the taxpayers. I understand that. But my concern was then I would be pushed out of my home and no longer able to afford a home. If everybody's just doing levies right and left, there has to be some measure of control. And I think that would go back then to our state government. So, you know, it's opening up a whole nother can of worms and some people are complaining now that they can't afford the taxes here and increases and what do you do? I mean, up and move? I don't know. It's like we're pushing senior citizens to make choices they shouldn't have to make.
And Molly?
Yeah, that's a tough question. I definitely agree and understand the accountability part, but I think it's important to remember that school board members are also elected officials and members of the community. And we, you know, we're, we're also taxpayers. And so I think if, if that was given to us by the state, that if all districts were doing that, certainly we're not gonna take advantage, just like we don't do in other areas. But in, in terms of like being pushed out, that would be the same thing going on in the next community and the next community. And so I, I would definitely support that.
Michael?
Well, I think just, you know, the levies are a tough question, no doubt. I don't think there is one correct answer for it. You gotta listen to the community and what they can afford. That, you know, we just, sometimes, you know, I, I believe that they should have to vote on it for a school to get a levy, not just be able to implement it. And, you know, just where I, the, the school where I come from, where I work with this facility manager, we were almost shut down 10 years ago and we found alternatives, ways to make the money that we had work. Now we're a thriving school again. So I don't think they should just have the right to tax the people out of the houses.
Thank you. Next question. What would you do as a school board member when you hear or see misinformation being circulated regarding the school district? And we are back to Hala.
If I saw misinformation circulating about the school district, I would talk to people about it. The first point where I heard about it or where I hear about it, I would address it there. I would use social media. I would talk to the people I know. Just spread the word so it can be clear. And also I would go back to the district communications and inform them that there is a miscommunication out there. So on a, on a structural level, we have to address it and be clearer with our communication.
Thank you. Janet?
I would, if it's a one-on-one conversation, I would correct it on the spot if I had the correct answer or what I felt was right. Otherwise, I would direct it to the person I knew, whether it's the board chairperson or the superintendent, you know. I would ask questions until I got the answer that I needed and if it's on social media, I would post right then and there. You need to address it before it gets spread along the line and becomes gossip and even more misinformed.
Molly?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's easy to do in a person-to-person situation, but in our community, social media is a little bit challenging and it's important to remember that when you're a school board member, that you're part of that group again and that you can't have those individual, yes, you can correct information, but you're not speaking for the whole board and that's easily misinterpreted. So bringing it to the source, definitely. And then also just using the community website, bringing it to the district. Also, there's other social media sites that can possibly, if, if someone has a strong presence, that we can bring that to them and ask questions and perhaps get it filtered out. Thank you.
Michael?
If it's one-on-one, you know, definitely talk to the people that are involved. But if it's something that's been put out to a group of people or through a bunch, I think it'd be up to the communication director of the school to bring it to the proper conclusion for we're not getting six different people saying, "This is what it really is supposed to be." That should be up to the communication director of the school to straighten it out.
And Laura?
Well, misinformation is, is something that, that we always struggle with, especially as a board member because like as Molly said, you know, we're individual people, but often our comments can be taken as a board, as a, as a board opinion or as a board directive. The first thing that, if I'm speaking one-on-one, I will definitely correct information that, that, that I, I know to be true and factual. And if I'm not sure about something, I always seek information from the administration on specific detail. So I'm sure that it's as accurate as possible or I find different avenues of open-source information to be able to direct individuals that may have a, a, a question about something specific to give them, to direct them to another, another form where they can double-check that. another form where they can double-check that information themselves and they don't just have to take my word for it. It's a longer process than I care for. I wish I could just correct it right away and be done with it, but it takes work.
Thank you. Next question. What are the current challenges facing public education and school boards? Janet?
The achievement gap has been a big struggle for the last few years and I know that Columbia Heights is working with Department of Education to try and identify strengths and weaknesses in our classrooms and just trying to help the kids that are struggling and at the same time meeting the needs of the advanced placement classes. So it's sort of, you know, where do we go from here? How do we bring each one of these youth up to their achievement level, to a higher standard? How do we get there? What do we need to do in the community to better support the schools and the youth? I mean, obviously they're struggling and it's not just being based on test scores. So I see that as a huge impact that each one of us individually can make on these students here and I guess that's where my passion would lie, would be to, one-on-one, bring these kids to a brighter future.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's been stated many times, but funding is one of our biggest problems. You know, we're looking at the budget every year and we're a little bit worried, quite frankly, if we don't get that cross-subsidy funding that has been promised. In addition to that, I think just continuing to meet the needs of all of our learners and the wide range of learners that we have, I think our district does a great job, but there's always just looking for new things, new ways. Those early interventions, the early college in the schools, the special ed programming and just making sure that all of those different areas are up to par and competitive with our local schools, our neighborhood, our neighboring school districts. I think one of the other big challenges is just something that happened years ago, but open enrollment. It creates challenges not only for our district, but other districts. It's not unique to Columbia Heights. I think that oftentimes people are, you know, are easily convinced that maybe the next school over is going to be a better option and that just brings that chain effect in of kids leaving the community and then moving into another. So if we can continue to keep our kids in our district, that would be lovely.
Michael?
That's a real good question. The way to get the achievement gap shortened would be, number one, I feel we gotta get more parent involvement. We do a great job in the classrooms. The teachers are doing what we can, but it just doesn't mean it's got to learn here. We gotta get the community and the parents to get involved with what they're learning and give them a hand to start defining it. Open enrollment, we definitely got to look at to see if it's working or if it's just moving problems from city to city. We gotta be able to slow it down, see what's actually here that we need to keep our kids here and just study and go with what works for us, not worrying about the other communities around us. Thanks.
Laura?
I actually think that the biggest challenge, and I think that the district is really doing an amazing job with this, is when school, public schools were first instituted and formed, the main premise was to treat, was to teach students to become, you know, assembly line workers and things like that. There are so many more opportunities in the world now that to be able to truly meet the potential of each of these students, you have to have differentiated learning. And being able to offer all of those options so that the talents that a student naturally has, and maybe they're not good at taking tests, but they're really good at fixing something, they have those opportunities. And how do we meet those needs and do it on an economic scale? And that's really the, probably the largest challenge that we have and it would really be nice to get some more of that special education cross-subsidy so we could put more money into the classrooms instead of into a bus and into another program.
And Hala?
There are a number of challenges. One of them, we already talked about it, the special education cross-subsidy, that's a big one. And then we're also talking about the achievement gap, trying to close that up. It should not be predictable by a student's race or area code. A student's success should not be predictable by those things. I believe that we can work towards closing that gap if we give all of our students equitable opportunities for success and we have a lot of that right now, especially with our AP program. We've seen that shrinking of the gap there. So there's, there are a lot of things that can be done. There's a lot of things that we are currently doing. And also a big thing is that we need to make sure that our students graduate and are globally competitive, so they can compete with people, with their counterparts around the world and they can be successful, whatever their path is after high school.
If you were elected to the school board, what would you say are the best reasons for constituents to enroll their children in our district? And we are starting with Molly.
I love this question. I think that there's just so many great things about our district. I have children here and have been a huge supporter of our schools over the last several years. We have many different programs for the small district that we are. Kids that are leaving our high school can leave with college credits. We're implementing the early college program. We have AP courses. Our students are challenged on a regular basis. In addition to that, our special ed programs are just, are top-notch. I can't say enough about the teachers that we have, not just in special ed, but the teachers as a whole in this district. As a social worker, I go into many, many different schools throughout the metro area and it's just not matched in those other districts. I think that our teachers, because of the small, tight-knit community that we have, it's personal for them. They care about these kids on a different level. In addition to that, the activities, our students in Columbia Heights, I believe the number is maybe 70 to 80% of our students are involved in extracurricular activities at the high school. Any child can find an activity and participate. The district goes out of our way to make sure that things are affordable for our kids, that programs are there, the arts are available, again, just the athletics, everything, the plays that are put on. Thank you. Lots of different opportunities for our kids. Thank you.
Michael?
I honestly couldn't give you a real educated answer at this time because I do not know all the programs that we're offering and what success rates we have, so I wouldn't be able to give you an honest answer at this time.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I definitely believe the tight-knit community and the dedication of the staff is a huge factor. We have amazing programs in the arts. I just absolutely am in awe every time I go to one of the art shows or see a concert, just what a great job these kids are doing. And I'm really proud of how the kids are with each other. I mean, they look out for each other and I think that's really, really important. These kids don't, they're not in isolation and there's no real clicky-clicks, like when I went to high school many years ago, not that many years ago, but many years ago. We've got the great AP programs. We were, the college board, small school district of the year, we showed in a massive increase in the amount of underrepresented students taking AP courses. And in addition to that, the staff did such an amazing job of supporting these students, giving them extra help to being able to graduate these classes at a much higher rate. You know, normally when you have increased participation, the success rate goes down. In our case, it went up and that was because of the students and the staff and you can't, you can't ask for better than that. We're a small district.
And Hala?
Some things I like about the school district that I would share with other people, that I have been sharing with other people, are that we have a lot of programs here for students and students have a lot of opportunities to grow and to grow academically and otherwise. And this district has a lot of really dedicated staff and really good opportunities for getting ready for college. I mean, that getting students ready for college, it's not just part of a mission statement somewhere. It really is on the ground in our schools. And just for example, at the high school, we're talking about the AP program, the college and the schools, things like that. And another thing that I really appreciate about our schools here is that there's a strong connection with the community and that there's a lot of diversity and the students, just like what Laura had mentioned, the students really have great interpersonal relationships and it's, it would be nice if the world out there were like this little microcosm of how things go in the sense of community within the district.
Thank you. Janet?
We're really lucky to have Blooming Heights. I know the kids love being able to get out in the garden and just being outside and you're teaching them to plant and harvest and grow and you're teaching them to feed themselves for the future. So I know that's one of the biggest hits with the kids and they look forward to when it's their turn to get out in the garden and harvest and plant and I know my grandkids love doing that too, so we're feeding them for the future and I think the staff does an amazing job with that. We have an awesome adult education program that I believe is over a thousand students enrolled there that I'm just thrilled that we're creating that opportunity to help adults step up and grow where they weren't allowed to thrive before.
All right, thank you all. At this point, we'll bring the set questions to an end and turn to questions that have been submitted by our audience. For these questions, you will still have 90 seconds to answer and each person will be asked to answer. Besides standardized test scores, what other metrics are important to measure student achievement? And we are up to Michael.
That is a good question. Let's see what would be the best way to do this one. It's not always just a standardized test score. We gotta know what the community and what the other children in the class or the environment are doing. And I know nobody likes to use a sliding scale, but you know, we gotta get an average of what everybody's learning to know their highs and their lows. So I would say that basically, you know, go back to grading and testing the scores and doing averages to make the other people that are a little bit behind, the incentive to catch up to get up to the average.
Thank you. Laura?
Growth. I think growth is the, is the, is the best way really to measure success. You know, how much growth are we doing? Are we going, you know, are the students achieving a year's worth of growth in a year or are they achieving two years' worth of growth in a year? They still may be under the standardized test, but they're making significant progress. So they can all learn. It's just sometimes they need a little bit more time and a little bit more support and I believe that we definitely are doing that in both the academy and, well, even the grade schools as well, but in the high school by making sure that they have extra doses of math and, you know, that's how you do it, growth. That's, that's the best way to develop.
Thank you. Hala?
From a quantitative perspective, I would say growth, looking at the difference in students' growth, like what Laura had explained. But it's also important to look from a qualitative perspective, to look at other indicators like how parents report that their experience has been, how students feel in the schools. Do they feel safe? Do they feel like they belong? Do they feel like they've been challenged? And to also hear from teachers and staff because they're part of the school district. So I would say it's important to look at both qualitative and quantitative indicators.
Thank you. Janet?
I agree that we need to look at where kids started out and where they are at currently, whether it's completely individualized learning plans or grade standards and averaging. I think you can use a little bit of all the tools and recognizing the individual needs of the student. They're not just a number, they are our children, that we want to see them achieve and obtain goals. They need to have goals regardless of where they're at, where they're testing at. And some kids have test anxiety so bad they just bomb the test. So is that a good, fair tool to use for them? Not necessarily, but they know the information. So there's recognizing other ways of testing. It just, I think there's opportunities to explore and be creative.
Yeah, student growth, I think, is the number one thing that we need to be looking at. And it's important to remember that, you know, we have children coming into our district from other areas, other countries perhaps, speaking other languages. And so looking at where they start and then where they move to is really important. The other thing I think that we need to think about and consider is looking at children, the observations that we do. We have a wide range of learners. We're not just talking about our high schoolers where you can easily test and assess that way, but some of our earliest learners and possibly our special education students, observing them, letting the teachers observe them and write reports and things like that. And also as parents, you know, observing what we know our children to be learning, whether or not that comes through on the tests. Thank you.
Our next audience question. How do you feel you should engage with the teachers' union? And we start with Laura.
How should I engage? Well, I mean, seeing as the president of the teachers' union is actually in the same band as my son, I guess we just say hi whenever they, whenever he picks his son up from over from our house. So I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. We meet at functions and we say hi and we chat about the weather. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Hala?
The way engagement should happen with teachers' union should be at the level of a collective board because again, we don't operate as individual board members. So I believe in collaborating with the teachers' union. It should never be district versus teachers or district versus any, any collective bargaining unit. Collaboration is really important because at the end of the day, we all have the same goal.
Thank you. Janet?
We have to work together as a unit. Again, it should not be the district against the board or the board against the district or the board against the union. It's working together to resolve whatever the issue is and understanding that there will be those issues and so problem-solving and sometimes you have to get creative with the problem-solving and I'm sure there's lots of governance guidelines to go along with that. So since I haven't read the whole union handbook, I will forego that pleasure.
Laura? Uh, Molly, sorry.
That's okay. Again, as a board member, I'm a part of a collective board and would not be acting individually. Board meetings are held in public and those are all known in advance and posted, so if anything were to come up, that's how it would happen.
And Michael? And Michael?
A board member, and again, it's just like with the community and the parents. We're here to listen and be the eyes and bring it all together and collaborate for everybody can get a good solution to the situation.
Thank you. Everyone answered that one, right? Yes. Next question. How does the school board evaluate itself in terms of student achievement? And we begin with Hala.
The school board has a, a number of measures to evaluate its effectiveness. There, there's, there are rubrics that we use. We look at our goals. We evaluate our superintendent. We look at our programs. We have the principals' report out about the results. So there's a lot of measures that go in to work together. And the important thing is that we have our goals and we can work towards them.
Janet?
I, that was kind of a out of the field question. So I, I'm not quite sure how this school board currently handles it, but I take it that anybody is welcome to leave comments. I think there needs to be more community engagement and options for parents that don't want to leave names or, you know, a, a safe place that they can leave comments. I just, I think there's more reaching out to the community and the parents of the students that we're all here for.
Molly?
Yeah, most of our board work is relying on the tests and the, that the district, the rubrics that they're presenting to us. So we're, we're looking to the leaders of those individual schools to present that information. We're constantly evaluating and looking at those goals, as Hala said, and trying to move things forward. In doing that, we're also looking at assessing different programs. So every year, a couple of different programs are assessed, and we're, we're always evaluating those as well.
I'd say it's what's all the success rates are for closing the achievement gap and how while we're listening and bringing everything to the table. Again, it's a lot on the transparency. And if the school is starting to succeed and narrow its gaps, I would say that's the best way that we're rating ourselves and getting rated.
And Laura?
Pretty much a lot of things that were already said. So let me see if there's something new I can add. We do constant evaluations on our, on our programs. We do look at the, the test scores, because that is a, you know, a fixed number where we can compare to national averages and what we've done in previous years. So having that data, if we collected the data along the lines, we can evaluate it and compare it from year to year to see if this effort is being much more successful than another effort. You know, but we, we also do evaluations and advise, advise and ask questions. And we have reports that come, that come to us from the various administrators on, on programs and look for suggestions on, on things that we can do with improvements. It's pretty much a lot of what's already been said.
Thank you. Do you have children within the Columbia Heights School District? Janet?
No, I do not. I'm a grandmother. I enjoy that, and they're not in this district either. And most of them are, are older, out from the nest. And I'm happy I get my grandchildren playtime, so.
Molly?
Yes, I am. I have four children. One of them recently graduated in 2018, and is now in college. I also have two students in the high school and a daughter in the middle school.
Michael?
No, I do not, but I got two granddaughters that are actually going to this, the school district right now, and I want to see them achieve.
Laura?
Yes, I have, I have two students in the district and two students that have graduated. I have one over in the high school and one over in the academy.
Hala?
Yes, I do. My oldest just graduated in the spring, and she's in college now. And then my other daughter is now at the high school. She's a freshman at the high school.
Thank you. Next question. What could the school district do to be transparent? Molly?
Did you say what could, or what?
What more could the school district do to be transparent?
Gosh, I would struggle with that. I think we're always hearing from our community that we need to be transparent. The information is constantly updated on the internet, on our district webpage as far as especially the funding and the levies and the referendum that we're asking for. The, the board meetings are open to the public. Those are all posted online as well. If anyone is interested, they can certainly look at the Columbia Heights Public Schools webpage and come to any of our meetings. We welcome that. We welcome comments. I can't think of anything further.
Michael?
I think listening more to the, what's the, the citizens are, you know, talking about and the parents, make sure that they're, all their needs are getting addressed and getting back with communication form if it's on an individual basis. Being real transparent on where the funding is going. If they say they're going to do a levy, or if they're going to do a maintenance repair, that it makes sure it gets done responsibly and within a, a good amount of time.
Laura?
Well, everything that, as, as far as finances, I could say it's all online. And I, and I know that it's, um, school funding is, is very complicated. I think that if, if there was a way to be able to explain it easier, it would make the transparency issue, you know, more transparent, I guess you could say. I, I'm, I am at a loss of how we can get more information out in a way where people would know how to get the, it, it's all out there. It's all online. It's all available. It's just, where do you look for it? It's not always, it's not always apparent. Even the, the bond issues, that is reported out on exactly where we spend all of the, all of the dollars every year. That's all lined up, as well as future projects. You know, we may, for example, replace a boiler in one school, even though we were, we were going to be doing it three years later, but we may have to do it earlier, because it becomes a critical issue, but it still falls within that, within that scope. Sometimes they move around a little bit based upon an emergency. I, I, I really look forward to anything else that we can do to make it easier for the public to know their, their district. I mean, this is their school. It's a community asset. And, and they, they should be, you know, fully informed. Now, that's as clear as mud, and I'm really sorry.
Hala?
As a school board, we need to be more proactive and connecting to the community, listening to the community, and responding to the community. Yes, we have listening sessions, but my opinion is that we need to reach out more. We need to, we need to connect. We need to go out into the community, rather than waiting for people to come to our website or to come to our events, things like that. So we need to connect more in a proactive way.
Thank you. And Janet?
I agree, Hala. Being out in a community, that's always been a tricky one. You were expecting people to come here. And you have a lot of seniors, a lot of people no longer have cable. You've still got seniors that don't have computers. I shudder to think what my mom would do to my computer. And I tried a long time ago, and yeah, didn't work so well. So I just think reaching out and being out in the community, also getting board agendas, meeting notes, at least 24 hours ahead of a school board meeting, could help letting people know that they can request that information, whether they can be here or not. There, you know, I think that's a conversation that, that there's ideas, there's possibilities there for us to take advantage of, having, recording a work session and letting people see that don't want to leave the comforts of their living room. You know, there's options to explore. Thank you.
Thank you. Explain the value of the arts in a K through 12 education, education in addressing opportunity gaps. Read that again. Explain the value of the arts in a K through 12 education in addressing opportunity gaps. And we begin with Michael.
Well, the arts definitely have a place in the schools. You know, the best thing you can do is express yourself by doing some art and doing the, the best you can. It doesn't make it as a priority as the math, reading, arithmetic, and that. But we definitely offer the, the arts to everybody that is capable and wanting to do the arts, I believe is the best way to do it.
Laura?
Well, creativity is really something that, that the district has done an amazing job with, is being able to really support the creative aspect of our students. Employers are looking for people who are creative, that can be problem solvers, that can think outside of the box. And you really need to encourage that. There's also a strong correlation, for example, with music and math. I don't know why, but there is definite evidence that having, that playing a musical instrument actually is, is better for your math testing. I don't know why. There is a correlation, and I like it. So I definitely support the arts in that, in that fashion. But employers and the world is looking for something more creative. How to make it bigger, better, faster, more efficient, you know, and we really need to support that.
Hala?
It's very important for students to be well-rounded. Academics, arts, and we say academics, arts, and athletics, but I don't really see arts as being that separate from the rest of the academics. Nurture students' creativity and giving them opportunities to express ideas, to analyze things. These are the ways that they learn. And if you take away their arts, then it'll hurt them in the other subjects. So definitely, it's, it's a priority.
Janet?
Arts, I see as, has many benefits for our youth. I think it can cross borders with reading, math, science. I think it can, it's not just arts. You're just going to draw a picture. Okay, how can you bring trigonometry into the picture then as an artist? And I just think that there's ways for youth to explore. It's an outlet. They're happy with whatever they're making that day, but there's so many other things that go into accomplishing that project. I have one granddaughter that loves to do nothing but draw and be creative, but doesn't want the math and the reading. The other granddaughter is very much a by-the-rules kid in math, reading, science. So, you know, how do we get you to lighten up and be a little more creative? So it's, you know, about offering that well-roundedness, and I think they can cross all educational borders.
And Molly?
Yeah, we know that students that have opportunities to be creative have increased achievement in academics as well. So it just makes sense to introduce and expose our students to arts early on, and to continue doing that in different ways. There's so many different ways that art can be introduced to them. Also, we have art teachers here that cross, cross into other areas. It's not just about the art project, but when they're doing the art project, they're using their language. They're using some of their other interests, and so it crosses over into so many different areas. In addition to that, some of our students are going to go on to have careers in art. There's, there's a lot of benefit to introducing our children to arts early on and continuing it.
Thank you. Next question. What is your own experience in public education? Laura?
I, I attended 17 schools while I was growing up. That's probably my main experience, and of course, I've been on the, on the, the, the school board here. So, yeah, I, I attended schools from Illinois to Florida. Everything from open classroom space, which by the way, is a really bad idea, to get 400 kids into a single room the size of a gymnasium. It was very difficult to learn, to very small classrooms where there were only seven to 10 students. Different types of schedules, everything from mods where your schedule shifted every single day from, you know, period one to period three, to two and five, split back and forth, and day one, two, three, four, five, six, very confusing. That was very interesting. So I have a lot of experience as a student.
Hala?
As a student, I'm a product of public education in terms of K-12. And my college, my bachelor's, was at a public institution. Grad school was private, but that's a different issue. I've taught in public schools. I've now served on boards of public schools for, I think, total like five or six years, this combining the other school I served on. And I've always taken my kids to public schools.
Janet?
Oh, I guess I'm going to be dating myself a little bit here, but I went to public school in a small town, but they didn't have kindergarten when I started school, so how lucky was I? 12 years and still 13. But I've been active in the school educational system for the last 30 years. My daughter is 30, so I can tell her age. But we started with the birth to, pre-K and in Buffalo, when I was living there, I was on the Early Childhood Family Education Advisory Council. And so we had regular playdates, and that was very rewarding. And we continued that on, up through until she graduated high school. And I, when we moved to Columbia Heights, then I became active as a reading tutor at Valley View. And currently a District 13 community, adult community education advisory council member. So I've still stayed active even after retirement. Thank you.
And Molly?
Thank you. I also attended public schools, K-12 in Columbia Heights. My degree is from a public university as well. I've been a parent of students in this district, so public education for six, 15 years perhaps. In addition to that, I'm a social worker in Hennepin County. And as, in that role, I'm usually working with families and children that are, attend schools. So it's important that we're overseeing that aspect of their, their childhood. So we're, we're always working with the school's social workers and teachers and being collaborative and making sure that all of the needs are being met there.
I grew up in Minneapolis School District, K through 12. I went to vocational technical school as a high school. That was the last year graduating before they made it a postgrad school. I successfully graduated in the automotive field, which I run a company now with the automotive field successfully. I've got 10 years as a facility manager at a 33-month through high school 12th grade classes. One part of the school is private, the other part is charter, so I get to see the workings of between the way the charter school runs and the private school runs. I spent 10 years as a Minneapolis Police Reserve, and then 17 years with Hennepin County that I paid it to the instructors for extrication, EMT, first responder training. And I was also sergeant, so I was in charge of a bunch of people that we, when we went out to scenes. I've worked well with diversity. I've gone to many, many, many scenes that people probably wouldn't want to. I worked a 35W bridge disaster. I was on the dive team for six, 16 days after that. So I, I'm really rounded on, you know, everything that I do. Thank you.
Thank you all. We are out of time. That means there's nine questions that were submitted by the audience that we did not have time to answer. But thank you to the local union, to our five candidates, and to all of you. But thank you to the local union, to our five candidates and to all of you for showing up.
Thank you for having us.